We'll be back in session. As we went out in recess, we were discussing the amended, the amendment to the agreement with the CAPC to amend the auditorium. Each of you does have a copy now of an amendment that Mr. Weaver and Mr. Ragsdale generated, and at the bottom it's entitled 2M, which would be the section two, number M after L. Says the CAPC will remit any profits generated above our cost of $94,735. Yes, ma'am?
Could we please have a quick recap of what those costs entail?
Yes, ma'am. This was provided by our finance directors. We have music licenses of $929, that would be ASCAP, BMI, CSAC, making sure that artists get their royalties, fire phone alarm lines of $3,112, the sound tech and equipment rental contract of $40,000, the Polestar guide of $599, liquor license and the obligatory training of $1,500, the auditorium website of $160, wages and contract labor of $44,589. That includes our special events director, an assistant that works with him during all of the major events, I believe her name is Soraya, and then we also have $5,000 that we have dedicated for contract labor for helping staffing the auditorium for special events and festivals. In the copier lease, $2,750, the city, $1,000 for the utility reimbursement for the special events office, $650 that we have budgeted towards production maintenance items like gels and replacement, gaffer's tapes, things like that for stage supplies, and a city license of $375. That comes up to a total of $94,735.
Okay, and the tech again was how much?
It is not just the tech, but also for the rental of equipment and things, and that's a total of $40,000.
Okay, and the wages and contract labor again, please?
That is $44,589.
Okay, so this, so that adds up to roughly $45,000. So this is, this is $45,000 that the taxpayers, the people, the citizens and the tourists are subsidizing, are subsidizing for the CAPC when the CAPC actually has its own revenue stream. So that, that puzzles me, why, why we, why the people would be waiting until you recouped all these costs before you start kicking in any excess. So in other words, in essence, the people are paying this twice if we go this way. The people are paying the taxes, and the taxpayers and the tourists are paying the taxes, and then we're not seeing anything back on it until the CAPC has recouped those costs. So in essence, that's sort of like the people and the taxpayers and the tourists paying for these things twice. That, I have a problem with that.
Actually, it's only paid for once by the CAPC tax, which is solely paid for through lodging and restaurant sales.
So the people are gonna...
And then if we sell enough tickets...
So the CAPC pays these, the tax and the equipment and the wages and the contract labor from the CAPC funds, which are being paid by the tourist, by the tourist lodges and the restaurants?
Correct.
But...
And then once we generate enough operating profits above that $94,000, then after we've recouped our costs, we are more than happy to help recoup the costs to the city itself for the operation. And it might be more than the utilities. We're hoping that it's much more than the utilities, and some of the profits generated could possibly go towards the actual maintenance of the building as well.
That'd be great.
I mean, it's not that we're trying to shift anything from you. We're actually probably absorbing more costs this year on our end by not only providing all of this labor, the contract, the supplies, the phone bills and things like that, but we're also going to be generating much more advertising for all events that go into it through the CAPC market support funds, and on top of that, just the staff that helps out with things like the press releases, answering the phone calls, all the things that are even above and beyond these things that we're doing. The CAPC does much more to promote the events and things on top of this $94,000. So we're trying to invest into the city, into the auditorium's operation, to help keep the city vibrant, alive, bringing people to the town, which is truly vital to everyone, whether they truly work only within the tourism industry or outside of the tourism industry. Without that industry coming to town, I just, I can't even grasp that thought. So to me, I'm just, we're trying to do everything that we can within our scope of law to support the city throughout its advertising and promotion and in support of the arts. So we're, we've, we've come along with a lot of our funds, it's, you know, roughly a tenth or so of our budget is going to the operation of a building that benefits everyone in our city. Thank you.
Mr. Pennell?
Just have one recommendation, and I know this is semantics, keeping in line with letter L. If there isn't any literary license problem, I'd like to see 2M read, pay the city any profits generated above CAPC cost of $94,735, and keep it in line in the same type of verbiage as letter L.
We'd be fine with that, I believe. Motion. Do you want to change it?
I would ask the attorney to let the change instead.
I'm gonna say again, pay the city any profits generated above CAPC cost of $94,735.
You want that with section L?
To, to M.
To M.
Pay the city any profits generated above CAPC cost of $94,735.
It's under C A P C cost, so scratch your heart. It's under C A P C.
Okay.
On M, not L.
Okay.
That does make it clear.
Mr. Pennell?
I move that we authorize the mayor to sign this agreement as amended.
Second.
Any further discussion? Do you recall the order?
No.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Miss Balance?
No.
Mr. Raphael?
Yes.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Pennell?
Yes.
Dr. Kurt Hatcher?
No.
Four yeses, two noes.
Okay, Ms. Clerk?
Can you move it right along?
Okay. Let's bring it in. I got it in.
If you would please understand it, have it examined.
Yeah.
Put it on your stationery.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Do you need a signature right now?
You should probably have a copy of it.
Yeah.
Since both parties have signed it, and then you can get a clean one.
Can I bring a copy right back to you? I can, I don't know, red or black, or however you'd like.
Be tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah, tomorrow.
Are you all right with that?
Yeah, I guess.
Someone could go downstairs and may have come out.
That would be the best.
Yeah. If we can't trust the man to bring it back tomorrow, then we...
Perfect.
Okay. The other part of this is discussion on the auditorium ordinance review. Motion to discuss?
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Okay. Mr. DeVito?
I would move, since we have devoted so much of our time tonight, and we have now been granted the benefit of a year, to formulate a plan that we postpone the auditorium commission at this time.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I have no.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The auditorium review is postponed. Okay. Moves this to number five.
To discuss.
Second.
Discussion's open.
Do we have a municipal opinion?
Yes, sir. Everybody should have got a copy of the email from Mr. Vozel and Mr. Shaw. I gotta find it here.
Is this in our boxes?
Yes. Well, you should have got an email. Everybody should have got an email regarding this. From Mr. Shaw. I gotta find it here. I flipped it over somewhere.
Shaw did have all the council addresses on the email.
Ah, here it is. Okay. Okay. The request was sent to Mr. Shaw as, as a, does everybody have this to start with? Okay, how many don't have it?
Is that on 119?
Yes, it is correct. Yeah. Okay.
I believe I have read it, I just don't have hard copy.
It says, Mayor Pate, I believe the commerce use distinction originate from a message or letter from the state and highway department. You also provided me with the following message from Arkansas Highway Transportation Department, Deputy Director, Chief Engineer Vozel. Mayor Pate, as we discussed this afternoon, the department's position, now this is Mr. Vozel speaking, position on this matter is Mr. Berry was quoted in the DM Gazette article on November the 6th, that is, quote, "If he wants to run a horse and carriage on the highway, we can't stop him. If he wants to charge for rides, he needs to get a franchise from the city," unquote. Thanks, Mr. Vozel. Mr. Shaw opines so, the distinction the state is making appears to be that, on one hand, the city may not determine what types of vehicles may travel on a state highway within the city limits, but on the other hand, the city may regulate the commercial uses of vehicles on those same highways. David Shaw, Arkansas Municipal. Mr. DeVito?
So being as Mr. Dotson is a franchisee, he is to abide by all the regulations attendant to that agreement?
That appears to be Mr. Shaw's opinion, as derived from Mr. Vozel's statement, who works for the highway department. Mr. Pennell?
Based on his comments, in accordance with 4.28.08, says no driver shall solicit passengers except at the depot. I don't feel that that's in compliance with the franchise agreement, based on what he has said he is going to do, and that we have to grant him an opportunity for a hearing if we're going to pull his franchise, and I make a motion that we set a date for a hearing to do such.
What has he violated to have a hearing? Would be a good question to ask Mr. Weaver.
That would actually be my question, more to the council's table, because at this point, what is stated purpose or what he may have stated has not occurred until something occurs that is a violation of the contract. You may be getting your cart in front of your horse again.
I'll put my drapes behind my horse and withdraw my motion.
I can understand the council, if you believe the contract has been violated, holding your hearing, but unless you have something to articulate as you believing to be an actual violation, you're a little ahead of yourself.
Actually, that's not even what's on the agenda. The agenda states Ray Dotson's load/unload list. Miss Balance?
Once again, 4.28.08, boarding and disembarking, says, "A franchisee shall allow passengers to board and disembark only at the pre-established route termini and other pre-established points on route, on the route as set forth in the application and approved by the council." If I recall correctly, the application that was set forth and approved by the council didn't have pre-established route termini or pre-established points on the route. So his, his application didn't cut the mustard.
The time to have addressed that, that would have been before approval.
Well...
Until he violates that by loading or unloading in an unapproved spot. He has not violated his terms that he agreed to.
Well, it's, it's not on his application, so he kind of like left something out, or, I mean, you know, we should be able to address that, I would think.
Now, we've already approved his franchise, whether you like it or not, we did approve and give him a franchise. If you want to take it away from him, one thing we can do is wait for a violation. That's it. I believe the attorney agrees with me there.
Proper procedure would be to not anticipate breach, but wait until there is breach of the contract, if, if breach occurs.
Thank you.
Any further? Mr. DeVito?
Well, as per the application, maybe the city clerk could send a letter to Mr. Dotson saying that there's a missing portion on the application, and that he would please fulfill the requirements as a courtesy.
Any further, Mr. Pennell?
I'd just recommend that, as you look at new business item five, that's been postponed until the second meeting in February, that we might want to make a note of that to address in the review of the ordinance.
Excuse me?
Yeah, I don't think I caught that one yet. Can you repeat that, sir?
I don't understand, I'm sorry.
The problems that we're anticipating, as Mr. Weaver stated, getting our cart before the horse, I think we maybe need to address in the second meeting in February.
Number five under new business. It'd be number five under new business. Okay. Mr. Berry?
I guess I just want to make sure that the clerk is going to go ahead and write the letter asking for Mr. Dotson to provide a list for loading/unloading passengers' locations.
He'll be happy to.
Any further discussion on this one? If not, we'll move on to number six. The handicap parking ordinance, I suppose to submit this for planning commission, you have an ordinance before you. I believe that Mr. Weaver originated.
Move to discuss item six.
Second.
Motion, floor is open.
Make a motion, we assign a number to the ordinance to amend chapter eight of the municipal code.
Second.
And read, excuse me, place on its first reading, whatever the right verbiage is.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll get a good voice for him, this is a real call.
No, not to just read it.
Okay, all right.
To approve it, yes.
Orderance number 2149. Orderance to amend chapter eight of the Eureka Springs Municipal Code, whereas the City of Eureka Springs, the city currently recognizes the need to further protect parking for the disabled within Eureka Springs, and whereas the City Council believes that chapter eight of the municipal code needs changes to more effectively deal with this issue, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, section one, that section 8.40.03, parking for the disabled, is hereby amended to read as follows. A, it is unlawful for any vehicle to be parked in area designated for the exclusive use of any person with a disability unless the vehicle displays a special license plate, a special certificate, or an official designation. It is also unlawful for any vehicle to be parked in an area designated for the exclusive use of any person with a disability if operated by a person who is not a person with a disability while not being used for the actual transporting of a person with a disability. B, any person violating provisions of this section shall be guilty of a misdemeanor. C, any person convicted of violating the provisions of this subsection shall be fined in an amount not less than $250 nor more than $500 for the first offense, and not less than $500 nor more than $1,000 for the second and subsequent offenses, plus applicable towing, impoundment, and related fees, as well as court costs. D, any of the following designations that are displayed on each parking space for persons with disabilities and visible to the driver's eye level shall be enforced as provided under the subchapter and are regulatory in nature. A, a sign that displays the blue and white international symbol of access accompanied by one or more of the following phrases, or a sign that states any of the following. One, disabled parking. Two, man-accessible. Three, handicap parking. Four, reserved for handicap. Five, reserved parking, with the blue and white international symbol of access, or six, permit required, towing enforced, or B, a sign that is compliant with R-7 to 8, R-7 to 8A, or R-7 to 8B of the manual on uniform traffic control devices promulgated by the Federal Highway Administration of the United States Department of Transportation. Two, corresponding pavement markings of the blue and white international symbol of access are preferred but not required for enforcement of this subchapter. E, enforcement. A, any law enforcement or parking enforcement official in the City of Eureka Springs may enter upon any public parking space, public parking lot, or public parking facility in the city for the purpose of enforcing all codes with respect to accessible parking for a person with a disability. B, any law enforcement or parking official, parking enforcement official in the City of Eureka Springs may enter upon the parking space, parking lot, or parking facility of any private agency in the city for the purpose of enforcing all codes with respect to accessible parking for a person with a disability. Section two, all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict. Section three, that in the event that any section, paragraph, subdivision, clause, phrase, or other provision, or portion of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid or unconstitutional, the same shall not affect the validity of this ordinance, code, code section, or chapter as a whole, or any part or provision other than the part so decided to be invalid or unconstitutional, and the remaining provisions of this ordinance, code, code section, or chapter, shall remain in effect.
Mr. DeVito?
Move to approve ordinance number 2149 on its first reading.
Second.
All in favor? No more discussion? Okay, go ahead.
Just a question for the city attorney. Can we impose a fine greater than what state statute authorizes?
This fine is in line with the state statute as amended by the most recent legislates. The primary change that this will do is transfer it from a state violation of state statute to a city ordinance violation, which will actually lower the court costs, and it also allows that the enforcement may be done by our parking enforcement officers rather than by our sworn law enforcement officers only.
My only question to that is the minimums are in conflict with state code, and I didn't think we could exceed those. And C, where we got 250, less than, not less than 250, in state code it's 100, and not less than, on the second offense, it's not less than 250, not greater than 1,000.
It's the maximums, not the minimums that are in force that we cannot exceed. We cannot raise above the maximum 1,000.
Good, thank you.
Okay. All right, we vote now. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, just, okay. All right, number seven, stated on the agenda is petition for right to regulate on city and state highways. Mr. DeVito and Miss Balance?
Move to discuss.
Second.
Floor is open. Mr. DeVito?
I think with, you know, unless something comes up, the recent municipal league opinions should suffice in our question of can we regulate, and their opinion is that we can. Commerce, that is.
Commerce. Mr. Raphael, you got your hand up?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you want to strike this one, since it's already been taken care of by the opinion on...
I'd move to strike it.
Give me a second? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. Moves this into new business. Mr. Gunnels, you're on board, sir.
Move to discuss, Joe Gunnelters.
Second.
All right. Here it comes. Go ahead.
Okay.
You can, y'all want to let him go ahead, or y'all want to discuss something else first before he takes off? Let him finish what he was talking about a while ago.
I'd move to have Mr. Gunnels address the council.
Sir? Give me a second.
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 All right. Mr. Gunnels, you have the mic, sir.
Do you want me to adjust this, Nathan? That's good.
Get it where you want it.
Good. That's good. Thanks, sir. Well, I really kind of addressed it in my remarks earlier. I don't know legally or, you know, officially what can be done, you know, about this. My request is, again, to either revoke, rescind, recall, I'm not sure that, what you would actually call for Mr. Varner's, or franchise to be, and, Mr. Weaver, if you want to, I don't know if you want to help me here with a, with a definition, but I need, before we go any further, does everyone on council understand what I'm asking? The last meeting, his application was approved for the second franchise. Besides all of the previous meetings and conversations, and I thought pretty clearly understood and agreed by most of council, if not all, was questionable whether there was a second franchise warranted, according to even the definition that was written into the, into the ordinance. But anyway, it was issued, so I had questions about that, whether, you know, what, what the statement was made, or, you know, his statement that shows that it was warranted, considering current economic, shall I read it? Maybe I should, for, to be very clear.
I'd move to have Mr. Gunnels address the council.
Sir. Your second?
Second.
Second.
All right. Mr. Gunnels, you have the mic, sir.
You want me to adjust this, Nathan? That's good.
You get where you want.
Good, that's good. Thanks, sir. Well, I really kind of addressed it in my remarks earlier. I don't know legally or, you know, officially what can be done, you know, about this. My request is, again, to either revoke, rescind, recall. I'm not sure that, what you would actually call for Mr. Varner's applicant, or franchise to be. And, Mr. Weaver, if you want to, I don't know if you want to help me here with the definition, but I need, before we go any further, does everyone on council understand what I'm asking? The last meeting, his application was approved for the second franchise. Besides all of the previous meetings and conversations, and I thought pretty clearly understood and agreed by most of council, if not all, was questionable whether there was a second franchise warranted according to even the definition that was written into the, into the ordinance. But, anyway, it was issued, so I had questions about that, whether, you know, what, what the statement was made, or, you know, his statement that shows that it was warranted considering current economic. Shall I read it? Maybe I should, for, to be very clear. And that is four point two oh point oh six J, which says a statement of why the applicant believes that the issuance of said franchise is warranted by the current economic situation of the tour industry in Eureka Springs, Arkansas. And so, I didn't read the application. I don't know, you know, council had copies of those applications and apparently read them and made a decision based on that somehow he was able to show that a second one was warranted, and that's, that's one issue. I can't argue with that. If you, if you all read that statement and you agreed to that, I can't argue with that. But I can argue with the, the facts of B, Section B, and H. B. Read it. Applicant's local business office address, telephone number, email address, and business website address. Again, it, you know, there's not definition of local, and, again, I don't know, you know, I'd like to ask Mr. Weaver maybe an opinion of, of a legal, more legal definition of local, and if you don't want to answer that, that's okay, and I would understand. I did talk with another attorney, and he said, Joe, I've, I don't know, he said that, he said, I, there's just no way legally, he felt like, that Washburn, Missouri could be considered local to Eureka Springs. It's not even in the same state, same county, so that's part of the application. I didn't write the application, but I met it, my qualifications, I met those. My requirement was that I had to show a local address, a local phone number. I did that. His doesn't. Now, that's an easy remedy if he wanted to move to Eureka Springs and have an office and have a local phone number. Strictly a suggestion. You know, what I know about the economics of the tram tours is that if he has to move to Eureka Springs and rent an office and have a phone and those expenses to have a local presence here, that's going to be financially, that's, that's going to be a decision he has to make, but maybe why doesn't, you know, doesn't have that already. But nevertheless, regardless of reasons, it's, it's a fact that his application was made from Washburn, Missouri. So number, that has, has one point. And then Section H. Another one, that, you know, again, his application and why he felt like the second franchise should be warranted is one thing, maybe arguable, but H says that we have to submit a statement describing the applicant's activities and efforts during the previous three years to develop group tour business, including but not by way of limitation, advertisements, attendance at trade shows, membership in trade organizations, and at least two business references. So, again, you know, three years. In the email I sent to council and to the mayor, tried to make it easy on you guys and ma'am, to where would give you specific minute and seconds in the previous meetings where Mr. Varner, by his own words, this is not something I'm accusing him of, he just simply said, been in business for less than or about two years. And if you go to his business website, it states on there for the past two years. Two years can't be stretched into three years. It takes another year to get to the three years. And so, that to me was like, that seemed really blatant to me and really clear, but realizing that, you know, maybe I'm looking at it a little more emotionally, I apologize, I know that I am, but I also know that I'm trying to be fair. And what I've asked for, from council for this entire thing, and all of my letters, all my comments have always been, this is nothing personal, Mr. Varner, I don't know him, seems like a very nice guy, he can still bring groups to Eureka Springs, he doesn't have to have a franchise to do that. And, so, this is nothing personal. This isn't about selfishness or greed at all. It is about business survival. I'm a business that's been, been here for this number of years, that may not even necessarily be important, but what we're facing here, we've got a situation to where Mr. Varner, with absolutely no group business ever brought to the tour business in Eureka Springs in his past two years. I'm not accusing him of that, that is what he said, stated in, in previous meetings. So he can have come into town, no business, bringing no business into the system, get a franchise, and take fifty percent of the individual group tour income, and, and not be obligated to bring anything to it. And this is all about group tours, is why the franchises exist, not individuals, we keep going back to that. But anyway, so I'm just asking, based on at least those three, what I believe, they seem really clear to me, and just asking for your consideration to, again, you give me a term here, I'd, I'd like to speak clearly about that, but I'm asking you to rescind that decision, to recall it, and not, you know, we're not asking to change it back to, or not change it back, but changing it to one franchise. Mr. Varner, in, in a year's time, will have three years that he can show that he's done and promoted group tours. And, but he can't do that now. He's only had two years by his own, you know, his own testimony. So we can't add an extra year on the counter for him. I got a, I questioned the transit director about this, and asked him just for his opinion, and I'll close with, I wanted to read that. Sorry. Obviously, this is very, you know, emotional to me, or very personal to me. But I, but I asked the transit director, you know, just not your, you know, what you want, whether you want a second franchise, you know, because, you know, you think that more franchises equals more competition and more exposure. Not asking that, but just based on the facts, what is your opinion about being local, or about the three years? And I said, if you don't want to answer that, I certainly understand in that position. He said, in Section H, I read this as in the last three years, meaning if you, Joe Gunnels, were to fill this out, you, as Joe Gunnels Tours, would have much more than three years developing a group tour business, but the application would only want you to discuss recent efforts. Jerry, Mr. Varner, only has two years, but as I read it, that will not exclude him as a franchise applicant. So, I have to, Joe, because Joe Gunnels, because you've been in business for more than three years, you show what you've done for three years, but he hasn't been in business for three years, so he only has to show what he's done for two years? Fine, but that's not what the application, it's not what the, the ordinance says. So I think based on those things, you know, I'm just asking for a reconsideration and to withdraw, you know, that, that, that second franchise at this time. And that's, that's it. That's, you know, that's what I'm asking, and appreciate your time, sorry to take so much of your time about this, but it's very important, and do anybody have any questions for me?
Mr. DeVito.
I'd like to direct a question to the city attorney, particularly about four twenty oh three, about the number of franchises, and then also, I'm sorry, I've lost my place. You had, you had three items, oh, residency. Would, are granting the franchise contrary to our ordinance somehow put that franchise in jeopardy?
If you truly granted the franchise in violation of law, potentially it could, but the points that have been stated here today are not in violation, in my opinion. The transit director is very clear in his statement on the three years, and I believe the wording, as approved by this council, was to demonstrate three years, not that the person had to have three years, but you had to be what you did in the last three Is a very accurate reading of what the franchise documents require. As to the definition of local, this table, when it reviews any application for franchise, not just for the tour franchise, you become the determining body of does that application meet the requirements of that particular franchise, just as you discussed a moment ago with a horse drawn, or carriage franchises. You are the sole judge of whether that application meets the definition. You wrote, or had wrote, and then passed and approved this franchise agreement with the word local. So you are the defining element of local, and when this table granted the franchise to an application, you are making a determination that it's local, whatever that meaning you apply to it. At this point, what is being asked is, would basically be to rescind a granted and approved contract. And to do that without a breach by the other party would potentially be breach by this party.
Mr. Pennell, had your hand up first, sir.
A further question from what across the table colleague has asked. In the, in the workshop when we rewrote the ordinance portions, it was agreed, and it's also in the application, I don't know where the appropriate, being able to bring it back to the table, it says that we would limit to one franchise until such time ridership or cost of operations don't warrant just one, but where we need two. Can that be brought to the table as far as anything that we discussed, and then we voted contrary to what we put in the ordinance?
Your vote on the actual ordinance is the law, not your mental intent, if it is different, because your mental intent would not be a group decision. The group decision was to approve the ordinance as drawn and as read at the table. And so therefore, that is the intent of the whole, as opposed to the intent of one or more.
So, so if the ordinance says that council will grant one until such time, the need exists for two, and we voted to the contrary, we can't withdraw that?
I'm not understanding your question. Are you asking, can you amend the franchise agreement? Or are you asking, can you withdraw the franchise because you believe that that was not met at this time? Or something else?
The franchise agree, the franchise in four point twenty states that we will authorize two franchises, but at this time we will award one until such time council determines that there's a need for two. At the same meeting where we approved that ordinance change, we turned around and said without any consideration of the track record that there's a need immediately for two. And that doesn't seem...
Could I, could I say something, Mayor?
There is no timeframe specified of how long that decision-making process has to be. So when the second franchise was applied for, that determination therefore would have been made by those council members voting in favor of granting the franchise, that it was needed. There was evidence presented, the, a second franchise, and that included a letter from your transit director indicating that he believed two franchises were warranted.
Miss Balance.
Let me ask just for clarification. Does somebody have a current, a current copy of this ordinance that we passed? And, and may I read four twenty oh three? You have a current copy?
Uh huh.
Does four twenty oh three say number of franchises? The number of group tour franchises shall be no more than two, but may be limited to city council, to one, in times when ridership and or cost of operation do not warrant the issuance of more than one. Is that what yours says? Okay, then I have a question for clarification. At, this, this, this is what it says, may be limited to city council, by city council to one, in times... Did we ever vote to limit the number of franchises to one? We never voted to limit the number of franchises to one, so that's kind of a moot, that's a moot argument.
Yes, we do.
Because we never voted to limit it to one, so we don't have any reason to unvote the limitation, to, to vote to override that limitation because we never officially made that limitation of only one franchise. So that's not even really a consideration right now. Yes? Did that make sense?
That's my understanding. Mr. Pennell.
That's my question, because we did vote in the minutes. It says, Mr. Pennell made a motion to have only one group tour franchise at this time. Mr. DeVito seconded. The only reference, Mr. Berry referenced a letter from the transit director following discussion, it was a three-three vote with the mayor of, following discussion, then Mr. DeVito approved, moved to approve the application. So we had a motion within a motion, the way this reads.
Mr. DeVito.
Well, regardless of, of how we're going to interpret that, we even have a statement written into the ordinance, and J is it, in statement of why the applicant believes that the issuance of said franchise is warranted by the current economic situation. So even the applicant didn't address that, and it was specifically stated that that was to be part of his application, as well as, it's pretty cut and dried what our intent was to limit this, but for some reason, we went against our own ordinance.
Mr. Berry, you have your hand up?
No, I was gonna say, in reference to Mr. Pennell, that, that motion was defeated, failed, because it was a three-three vote. It didn't pass.
Mr. Pennell.
I believe Robert Schulz of order said, if you determine you've gotten more information that would have made a different decision in front of you by the next meeting, you can vote to change that decision also.
Can I comment here?
Yes, Renate.
Was that the last?
Okay.
Yes.
If I could make a comment too, and because of watching, again, I missed the meeting last time, but in watching the, the replay of it, Miss Balance, even she tried to, she tried to postpone the vote because in her words, she said, I just got these applications, I've not had time to review them. She abstained from voting for, for, she abstained from voting for my approval, for my application, but voted for Mr. Varner's. That, her voting for him perfectly, I mean, that's, that's her right, and it was her decision, but I question what Mr. Pennell just said, I, I'd just add to that, or agree with that, that this is new information. Mrs. Balance had not had time to read the applications, and yet was not, you know, she, maybe, I'm, you know, I don't want to speak for her, but maybe felt pressure that she should make a vote even though she hadn't reviewed the applications.
Anybody else?
And let, let me say one other thing. Mr. Weaver, you know, said that if you do recall it, rescind it, revoke it, whatever the term might be, that you would be subject to legal, you know, action from Mr. Varner. The opposite is true. You know, in seeking my own counsel about... You know, in seeking my own counsel about that, there's questions here about, again, local, it would be, you know, determined by...